If I could, I'd like to call our meeting to order. To all of you, welcome. Welcome to the Monday, May 11 regular session of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all here with us tonight. Looks like we've got a fair amount of speakers. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Baruch. Absent Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Oh, there she is. Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. We're delighted to have you here with us. Do we have a motion to adopt a meeting agenda? Yeah, go ahead. Or maybe to adopt an amended meeting agenda?
I move that we amend the agenda so that item number 14, approval of minutes of previous meetings, be switched to number 11, prior to number 11.
So, prior to the closed session?
Prior to the closed session.
Okay. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it? Does that make sense, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Looks like we have a few proclamations. Did you call the roll call? I'm sorry, did we do the?
We did do that. Yes.
What's that?
We're good.
You did call, I'm sorry. I guess I'm a little tipsy tonight. Okay, we've adopted the meeting. I'm just kidding, by the way. What's that?
Four.
Well, I don't think there is any special meeting. There's no special meeting notice tonight, is there?
No, sir.
Okay. So, why don't we go on to the special presentation and proclamations? And the first one is a very nice and exciting award, the ULI Urban Land Institute Award that was recently given to the city of Falls Church. Who do we have to speak about that tonight, Mr. Shields? Mr. Snyder, maybe?
We do have a number of guests that we'd like to recognize who were recognized by the Urban Land Institute, and Jim Snyder is coming forward along with representatives from Monarch Construction, Mr. John Bellingham, and representatives from the Easter Seals and representatives from Studio 27, which designed the project. But let me turn it over to Jim Snyder, who could say just a word or two about this. But we are very proud of the Easter Seals being in the city of Falls Church in their beautiful new facility on Huntington Avenue, and there are a lot of really good and talented people who made that happen, and we're very pleased that the Urban Land Institute amongst a field of extraordinary competition recognized this project for its excellence. And so, Jim, would you like to say a few words and maybe introduce our guests?
Yes.
Maybe you should come to the microphone, Mr. Snyder, so we can all hear, at least at home as well.
This is definitely a collective effort, and certainly when Easter Seals had to find a new home and the manager was asked to look around and all of us got together and started looking for new places that they might find a new home, that began a collective effort to make something happen, and the property that was owned by Monarch Construction happened to turn out to be the perfect place where the owner, who is also a very talented contractor, was able to sell the property and renovate it and turn it into a really fabulous facility from what was very plain and ordinary utilitarian garage. I think it's the collective effort of the city and the private sector, the EDA funds, the short timeframe that was recognized by ULI as making an extraordinary contribution. So, it won the best award for an institutional development against some very large and prestigious projects. I'd let the architect, Todd Ray, who actually put in the application for us, say a few words.
I'm not prepared for this, Jim. But I would say this has been a really unique project for us to be a part of. It's the first time that we've worked with such an extensive collaboration that permeated all the way through the municipality as well as the institutions that we were serving. And then, so, I would like to thank Jim very specifically because of some very crafty thinking relative to how to assemble this team and then ultimately pull it together, and then also with Lauren helping guiding us through this process, and then all the things that the city of Falls Church did to make this an extra effort, and we really appreciate that. And that's ultimately what the Urban Land Institute was really awarding, was how it was a fine job the city did. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Linda Janulis, Vice President of Children's Services for Easter Seals, and my job was the best part because it dealt with all the children. And so, I'd like to thank you for your partnership, your support, and really, most importantly, making a difference in the lives of children and families, and especially those children with special needs. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Falls Church because you really made my, excuse me, my job easy, my work throughout the Washington area, and I can honestly say without a word of a lie that Falls Church is the best municipality to work in. Unfortunately, when we sold our warehouse, we had to go to Fairfax County, and I'll be honest with you, there is absolutely no comparison because you want business to happen, you want us to do the right thing, which we're willing to do, but it's sad that we couldn't work in such a manner in Fairfax County. It's really sad to see the difference. Anyway, I'm pleased that we're involved, and it's so sad that we don't have a property in Falls Church at the moment, but Jim's working on me again. He has my arm halfway up my back already. So, thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, your presence at the interview, from what I understand, on a snowy morning at about eight or nine o'clock in the morning, made a big impression on the ULI panelists who journeyed there to see the project in person. So, again, thanks for your support, the manager's support, EDA's support, Walter Phillips, who did design work on Huntington Avenue. A lot of people had hand in this, so truly collective effort, and we're very pleased that it was recognized by ULI.
Well, first off, let me just say thank you to all of you on behalf of council. This kind of award, if people don't really know, it's extremely hard to get and extremely prestigious, and I saw some of the competition, which are projects, huge projects of hundreds of millions of dollars and maybe even billions of dollars. So, to have this kind of recognition here to the city is quite an achievement and quite an honor, and I know that there was so much work and cooperation that was involved. It really was a joint effort between Easter Seals, our different architects, contractors, the city, and it's really exciting to see something like this come to fruition, and I think we're all very proud of the hard work that was done, and we really want to congratulate you all. Maybe ask that you could come up with the award, and we'll get a photo or two, but thank you all for the great job you've done.
our Director of Planning, who really has done a great job of getting the city, I think, more involved in these kind of endeavors and exercises, which really raise the profile
of the city and of the development work we're doing here. So, thank you, Jim, for your hard work as well. Our next item is a proclamation declaring May as Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month. I believe Jason Witstrom is here today. Hi, Jason, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you. Let me see if I can find that proclamation real quick. Let's see. Okay. If I could, maybe I can read this, and then if you'd like to say a few words afterwards, that would be great. Whereas the streams and tributaries that flow above and below the ground through the city of Falls Church are part of an integrated watershed system that carries water from our rooftops, yards, streets, and parking lots into the Potomac River and the Chesapeake Bay. Whereas the city of Falls Church is committed to approving and protecting these precious waters as habitat for plant and animal life, as a recreational resource and as drinking water for our citizens both now and in the future. Whereas there are currently 213 commercial and residential properties in the Falls Church portion of the trips run and four-mile run floodplains, and whereas the city is participating in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, which recognizes and encourages community floodplain management and through which flood insurance rates may be reduced to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from community activities that meet targeted goals. And whereas the city provides opportunities to residences, businesses, schools, churches, and organizations to participate in watershed and floodplain education efforts. Whereas many citizens in our community have responded by participating in programs that serve to raise awareness about what individuals can do to their properties, their homes, and through their transportation choices to improve water quality and minimize their impact on the floodplain. Whereas the city has undertaken a citywide comprehensive effort to examine our watershed and develop a plan for improving watershed over the next 10 years. Whereas the city of Falls Church recognizes the importance of increasing public awareness of watershed and floodplain protection. Now therefore, I P. David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month in the city of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of this observation and to participate in watershed and floodplain protection activities in our community. Thank you. Mr. Witstrom? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about our ongoing efforts in stormwater management and our protection of our natural resources. Approximately one year ago, the city council's adoption of a stormwater enterprise fund and a dedicated revenue source showed the city's commitment to effectively and efficiently maintain its stormwater infrastructure. Dedicating May as Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month further emphasizes the importance the city council has placed on managing stormwater runoff. Under our stormwater program, Public Works crews diligently work to maintain existing infrastructure by removing literally tons of sediment and debris from our existing storm system and performing much-needed repairs to our severely aging stormwater system. Our engineering staff supports this work with comprehensive planning, engineering, mapping, and fieldwork. The same staff also provides plan reviews for development, residential consults for flooding and water quality concerns, outreach programs for the MS-4 permit, adherence to the National Flood Insurance Program, and a full list of other services. With the implementation of the expanded stormwater program over the last year, Public Works has also begun to tackle important flood mitigation and water quality projects. Residents can see some of these, like the city hall project just outside these doors. They can also see the stream restoration going on at South Spring Street adjacent to the Scout Building, the flood mitigation efforts ongoing at Cherry Street Jesse Thackeray School, and hopefully this summer, residents can take a walk along a newly restored cobranch in Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park. While the city is continually working hard to mitigate stormwater concerns, it is important to remember that our little urban city is prone to localized flooding, especially along our stream corridors. Watershed and Flood Plane Awareness Month is about recognizing this and preparing for it. If residents have concerns or questions about stormwater runoff and the risks, they should feel free to contact Public Works anytime, and we'd be happy to assist them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the fine job you do here at the city. I know many of us have had interactions with you, and you've been all over the place trying to keep our watershed the way it should be. Thank you very much. Why don't you come on up and receive this proclamation, if you might?
The next proclamation is in honor of our police officers. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Falls Church Police Department. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 273 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 117 officers killed in 2014 and 156 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 27th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2015. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 10 through 16. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff.
Now therefore, I P. David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 10 through 16, 2015, as Police Week in the city of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you very much. Why don't you come forward? I understand we've got Officer Parker. Would you like to come forward, please, sir? Or are you going to speak also, Mr. Laporta?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Police Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Part of that commemoration includes a 250-mile, three-day bicycle ride from Richmond to Charlottesville, then on to Warrington, and then finally to DC, where a special remembrance is held at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. In recent years, I have been privileged to organize a greeting rally as the riders complete their final leg pedaling along Route 50 through Seven Corners. However, in light of the civil unrest around the nation and specifically in our area, the Police Unity Ride has been significantly altered. The tour will not be passing through Falls Church on Route 50 as usual. The riders on the tour will be bused from the Fairfax Public Safety and Transportation Operations Center into RFK Stadium as a precautionary measure. As I speak, participants from the Falls Church Police Department and other jurisdictions throughout Virginia are resting in Warrington overnight and will tomorrow complete the shortened concluding segment of the ride. With your permission, I would like to appear at your next regular meeting with my banner and our local heroes to celebrate their accomplishment and to remember those who have died in the line of duty. The motto of the Police Unity Tour is "We Ride For Those Who Died." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laporta. It would be honored to have you come with your banner. Officer Parker, would you like to come forward? Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, our next item. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk? New boards and commission members?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, just an additional word of gratitude to our police officers. I think everyone up here supports what they do, and we much appreciate their service to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh-huh. Okay, any known?
I don't believe we have any tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to be sworn in in a board or commission? Okay. Why don't we go on to receipt of public comments? Madam Clerk, will you read the written comments?
We had a letter from Rohini Winters of 324 Grove Avenue. She expressed concerns about the location, siding, loading zone location, impact on residential neighborhoods, and the height of the proposed Mason Row project. She asked for a delay of second reading until all plans submitted to the AAB have been formally submitted. She said that boards and commissions need to see the details of the plan. She also forwarded some ideas for the bicycle master plan. Albert Tibbetts of 305 Grove Avenue expressed his concerns about the proposed Mason Row project, including concerns about traffic and siding of the loading zone. Aileen Orfali of 1008 Jennifer Lane wrote about her concerns about the proposed Mason Row project, including negative impact on the neighborhood because of the size, noise, visuals created on West Street, the location of the loading dock on West Street, and the height of the project. She invited the city council and members of boards and commissions to visit her home to see the impact that a tall building would have on her family and neighbors. And then, the Housing Commission provided comments on the proposed Mason Row project, recommending that the developer-proposed voluntary cash contribution in lieu of affordable dwelling units not be accepted. And then, oh, I did have one final email from Lynda Naborgall, and she just wanted to endorse Ms. Winters' email and said she agrees with her as well.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we go on now to our speakers, and if there are any council requests, we'll take those afterwards. We do have a fair amount of speakers. If you could, when you come on up, state your name and your address, if you can, and then your comments should be limited to three minutes. So, why don't we start with troop 760, or 676, and they'd like to speak about pedestrian safety. Would you like to come on up? Do you all have any cookies, by the way? It's a tradition that you bring cookies when you come to council, if you hadn't heard that before. That's probably something that's new to you, but anyway. Listen, welcome you all. Thank you so much for coming out. We're delighted to have you guys here tonight. So, tell us what you have to say about pedestrian safety, if you can.
So, our Girl Scout troop decided to research an issue of concern and decide how to best make an improvement in our community. The troop decided to split into two teams and to look at separate issues. Our team decided to look at a safety issue. This project is part of earning our bronze award. And we think the crosswalks near TJ are faded, and many streets need more visible crosswalks so kids can walk home safely. We want the faded crosswalks to be repainted and to be much more visible. In our research, we have found that most crosswalks in the city are faded, and we would suggest repainting the crosswalks citywide would make the whole city safer for walkers. We also see intersections without crosswalks that need them. And there are two girls in our Girl Scout troop that live near TJ and walk home from school. They think that the intersection of Seaton Lane and Rosemary especially needs a safer crosswalk because they've almost been hit by cars speeding up that hill. And then, attached to the letters, a petition signed by people who think that the crosswalks need to be repainted and for some new ones to be added. We ask that the city council take our letter in consideration as you plan for future repairs. Thank you.
Thank you all. Those are some great points. I walk my kids to school, and I think you've made some excellent points. Mr. Shields, do you have any thoughts or comments on that? Any time to consider the comments received tonight?
Well, we do have a Safe Routes to School program, and we would like to work with you all to maybe get some of your thoughts in terms of how you all use the streets, sidewalks, and how you all get around the city, and maybe we could use you as our consultants for where we ought to make some improvements.
Why don't you come on up and get a picture with council, if you'd like, and then we'll go on to the next item. And then, we'll go ahead and hear from you next to the next item. Thanks so much for coming out. Good job. Thanks for coming up, and why don't you go on down, and you can. And I also understand you're here to speak about some environmental issues. Is your environmental team here tonight as well? Why don't you all come on up and let us know what you have to say? Thanks for coming out tonight.
Our Girl Scout troop decided to research an issue of concern and decide how best to make an improvement in our community. The troop split into two teams to look at separate issues. Our team decided to look at an environmental issue. This project is part of earning our bronze award. We learned that four-mile run, which runs through the city, is very contaminated. A portion of the contamination comes from our city dog waste left near buildings on sidewalks and trails. When it rains, the waste is washed into streams and rivers contaminating the water, and no water animals can live in it. People from all around run, jog, and especially walk their pets, which then they go to the bathroom alongside sidewalks and trails where there are very few bag stations to and trashcans to dispose of their waste. Please help four-mile run by placing doggy waste stands around the city. Please consider our idea to a lower contamination of four-mile run. It would be nice to see some fish and crayfish in our streams again. And we have given copies of our letter to the city clerk, and it shows a picture of what waste can we think would be best that includes the trashcan and waste bags. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Those are some great ideas. Come on up, and maybe if you could, get a picture with us, if that'd be okay. Okay, we've got a few more speakers. You all are welcome to stick around. We'd be delighted to have you here with us. We've got a couple more speakers, if we could. Mr. Ron Brusseau, followed by Jeff Peterson. Welcome. Thank you for coming out.
My name is Ron Brusseau, and I live at 607 Northwest Street. I'm here to request that city council not move forward with considering the Mason Row development later this month unless the developers fully comply with the basic tenements of affordable housing policy, which was approved by the same council in February 2013. There are other considerations that might not permit your approval of the project. However, complying with the basic tenets, I believe, regarding ADUs should be a scenic one on for council moving forward. The latest spectrum development voluntary concession proposal of January 30, 2015, do not comply with these basic tenets. In fact, a new proposal is a step back from what had already been a bad proposal in August of 2014. The spectrum developers do not meet the affordable housing policy for the following three reasons. Only 66% of the affordable ADUs, 14 of the 21 units, fall within the 50% to 80% level required by the policy. The other seven units are outside that income range and do not qualify for the 6%. The developer does not distribute evenly within the range of policy income levels the units, spreading one-third of the unions evenly between the affordable policy stated income levels of 50% to 60%, 60% to 70%, and 70% to 80% should be complied with. Voluntary concessions also do not provide any additional ADUs to compensate the city for concessions granted by the special exception. For example, the city should negotiate an additional ADUs, maybe seven, for the 35% increase in density permitted by the special exception. The fact that the city did not enforce the 6% ADU policy minimum for the rush mark cannot and should not be used as an excuse or justification for future city council decisions. The city's historic and future vision is at stake. Will the city continue to be a welcoming community, offering a diversity of housing for all who have a stake in the city, including long-term residents, city and school employees, retirees, private sector employees who serve our residents, the elderly, unlimited incomes, and those with disabilities? The ADUs cover households with income levels of between $37,485,000 and $5,460,000 for individuals and and families of four. This range of income represents a vast majority of the above-mentioned city stakeholders. We can choose to be a gated, gentrified community or an inclusive, diverse community as proposed in our historical and present city vision. Thank you for taking these accounts into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Jeff Peterson, followed by Michelle Kim, Catherine Goodwin, and Victoria Corlett. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Jeff Peterson, 205 Tyson Drive. I'm here this evening to present to you a new report that speaks to the environmental conditions and sets some environmental goals for the city of Falls Church. This is a new report developed jointly by the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, working with the Environmental Services Council and the Tree Commission here within the city government. The report has been distributed to you on the dais, and it's available on the Vipis website at www.vipis.org. The five key goals that are identified in the report are increasing tree canopy, reducing solid waste, improving solid waste recycling, rather, reducing greenhouse gases, improving the degree of pervious green surfaces for stormwater management, and promoting sustainable buildings across the city. The new report includes baseline metrics for each of these five goals and sets long-term targets that can be used as essentially a horizon point to work toward over time. We did look back at the progress that's been made against these goals in past years, and we were particularly impressed with the work the city's done with respect to recycling and solid waste, where this is, the city is among the top-performing communities in the state of Virginia. In the area of greenhouse gases, we think, though, that that's an area that needs considerably more work, although some progress has been made. I want to thank a number of people for helping put this report together. The number of people from the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, including Dennis Samansky and Seth Hemingway and Peter Adrianz, Tim Stevens from the Vipis Board, who also serves on the Environmental Services Council, as well as other members of the Environmental Services Council and the Tree Commission. We all look forward to working with you and with city staff as we go forward in this process, and we hope that some of the recommendations and the suggestions we've made for meeting these goals in the report are things that we can work together on. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stevens, did you want to say, want to add anything? Thank you both for coming out, all of your hard work on this report, and just in general, all the good things you do for the city. We want to express our gratitude to both of you. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for this report and for harmonizing the very worthwhile environmental goals of Vipis along with the Environmental Services Council. Could you identify one or two areas in the five goals here that you think we've done the most on? You've identified some of the things that you think we ought to work on. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, as I said, I think the area where there's clearly been the most significant and impressive progress is in building the percentage of residential solid waste that is captured and recycled. And as I said, the city is doing very well, and I think is actually still top-rated in the entire state of Virginia, which isn't to say that it couldn't be better. It's not 100%. There are some communities that have set goal to do better than where we are right now, but that's clearly an area where the entire city's making an individual contribution. There's also the potential to do better in the commercial recycling area rather than just residential solid waste.
Thank you for that. And with respect to goal number five, the promote building environmental standards, notice here that for your 2015 goal, that you're saying that we should expand the city policy for at least lead silver for city buildings to include schools, adopting incentives for attainment lead ratings. Now, as you know, we're probably on the cusp of looking at funding the lead silver for Mount Daniels School, and that would be part of an FY '15 budget adjustment that is due to come before council shortly. So I just want to ask you bluntly whether you support this, you or Tim Stevens personally, and how do you think the environmental community would react to that with regard to the amount of investment required?
Sure. Thank you for your question. Tim Stevens, 505 North Oak Street. And the city does have a policy of lead silver, which it's adopted some years ago, but we thought it would be helpful to make it explicit that the policy should apply to school, the school arena as well. And we did this not so much because we think lead is perfect. There are certainly shortcomings there, but it does offer considerable advantages to a small jurisdiction like us, resource-constrained, in the sense that it's a third-party certification. So we have the help of trained professionals who can take a look at key building components to make sure that they're delivered properly and that the city is getting good value for its money, and ultimately to have a building that is most consistent with our environmental values. So it's for that purpose that we suggested that the lead silver be explicit for our schools, including Mount Daniel.
Thank you.
Okay, again, thank you so much for coming out tonight and all your hard work. We appreciate it. Our next speakers are Michelle Kim, Catherine Goodwin, and Victoria Corlett. Welcome to you all. Thanks for coming out this evening.
I'm Catherine Goodwin, Fort 10 Maple Avenue.
Hi, I'm Michelle Kim. I live on 300 North Virginia Avenue.
And I'm Victoria Corlett, and I live at 808 Ridge Place. And we're the team captains for George Mason High School's Relay for Life Team Life Guards. And additionally, I am a committee member on the Falls Church/Vienna's Event Leadership Committee. Relay for Life is very important to all of us, and we've all been involved with it since we were at MEH. Personally, I became involved with Relay for Life because both of my grandfathers had cancer, and I felt that participating in Relay for Life was a good way to honor both of them. Relay for Life, as I assure you all already know, is a communal event that was created by the American Cancer Society to both raise awareness and funds for all different types of cancer. Participants spend months leading up to the events, hosting both personal and team fundraisers in a friendly competition to see which participant and which team within the community can raise the most money. For example, this year, our team mostly raised through bake sales, which was where we met Mr. Duncan, who so kindly invited us to speak here today.
The day of the event, which is May 30th, the team members will walk, will take turns walking around George Mason's track from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Participants have the chance to meet and hear the stories of people who have been touched by cancer. Relay for Life really allows for people to be brought together as a community in such an inspiring way. Additionally, throughout the event, there will be a variety of fun-themed activities. And this year, we decided to add something new to the event. After the closing ceremony, which is at 12:00 a.m., there will be an after-prom party type of thing, which was created by Relay, which was created by Relay for Life, who discovered, who, who we, like, sorry, who we discovered that Relay for Life conflicts with our prom, and Relay for Life is very important to the students at George Mason, and Relay for Life Leadership Committee allowed us this after-prom party so that we could go to both.
So in conclusion, I encourage all of you to please come up, to please register for Relay for Life by going to their website, relay.acsevents.org, and typing your information into the "Sign up for an event" box. Relay for Life is such a communal event, and we would love to see the entire Falls Church community there, and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in such a worthy cause. Why don't you come on forward, and we'll get a picture with you up front. Lyndi, welcome.
Thank you. This is for you. Thank you. I'm Lyndi Hockenberry, and I happen to live at the corner or the intersection of 1208 Seton Lane and the dead end of Rosemary Lane that goes right into Seton Lane and goes, and that ends into my front yard. But I'd like to speak in support of the ideas that the Girl Scouts have, that that is a very dangerous intersection for a lot of reasons. The corner directly across from my house is a bus stop for both the high school and the middle school kids. It is a main route of walkers from all the upper Virginia forest area down, they feed down into Rosemary Lane and cross right in front of my house onto Seton Lane because the sidewalk is only on the west side of Seton Lane. And there is quite a hill right before that, and people do speed, and it's quite dangerous, and it's the only crossing right there that does not have a side, a walking jurisdiction or area. And I think it'd be very necessary. I also think that perhaps a speed thing might be somewhat good for there because it's a blind hill, and that's where our kids cross constantly to go down to TJ. And, oh, by the way, it also is a bus stop for the new preschool and for, I think, for Mount Daniel, too, but I'm not sure. I don't see any of the little ones. I do see the preschool kids. But it is really dangerous, and I've been worried about it for quite some time, and since I get to watch them cross. And so I think really something needs to be done without all the input of, you know, I think just needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thanks. In view of the good information, and I did have a chance to read it, that the Girl Scouts gave us and that Lyndi just gave us, I would request that we be a bit more specific in our request to the city manager to take a look at what else we can do and how rapidly we can paint crosswalks and to do a check on that particular intersection. I'm pretty familiar with that intersection, too, and everything that Lyndi said about its engineering and about the fact that you've got a couple hills coming up at the same time and meeting up there at the top. And I know that we have a traffic calming program, and there's a process to go through for the neighborhood, but that doesn't mean that we can't take a look at what's there in terms of the crosswalks and make them cleaner and clearer to people there and elsewhere. So I wondered if we could have a report back. Mr. City Manager, do you think three weeks, four weeks, with hopefully what's been done as well as what needs to be done?
Well, we've gotten an email out to Public Works already just to let them know that the question was asked, and so I'll get a response back to council as quickly as possible, but I think it'll be sooner than that.
Along those same lines, I think it'd be great to know what our repainting cycle is for crosswalks. In other words, what is a typical cycle before crosswalks are repainted, whether we need to revisit that, what kind of costs are associated with that? It seems to me it's a pretty good bang for your buck to paint or thermoseal or whatever it might be for public safety. And so I'm wondering if maybe when you report back to us, you can just give us an idea of what a typical cycle is, whether it's appropriate to maybe increase the cycle so that we don't wait as long to repaint crosswalks, and then what is, what costs associated with it? Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's it for our public speakers, unless anyone else in the audience wishes to speak, and you are certainly welcome to if you'd like to. But otherwise, we're going to go on to the business on the agenda. We've got a city manager report and some other things. But thank you to our Girl Scouts for coming out this evening. It's great to see you all. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we'll see you here soon. Why don't we go on now to council requests? Are there any requests of members of council? Does anyone have any requests? Okay. Let's go on then now to report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council. Just a few things to report on. One, just to follow up on the presentation from Vipis this morning from Mr. Peterson. The five goals, that document that you have has been distributed to staff. Some staff were involved in working with the ESC and the Tree Commission on their feedback to Vipis, but that's been distributed. Vipis has always been a very good partner with the city in pushing us forward, pushing, helping the whole community move forward on these environmental objectives. Our recycling rate, we've just gotten the report from the state, and congratulations, we have increased our recycling rate from 63% to 66% of our total solid waste is now recycled, and so that's good progress. I don't yet have the statewide rankings, but I suspect that we will be either at the top or near the top, as we have been for a number of years. On real estate tax bills, I wanted the community and the council to be aware that the treasurer is preparing the tax bills now, and they will go out very shortly. But the tax assessment and the tax rate will be the same as it was in your December billing and indeed same as it was last June, and this is part of the transition to aligning the fiscal year with our tax year. And so this will be the third tax bill with the same assessed value and the same tax rate. And so that, I think, will, after all the discussion about the budget, and traditionally in the city, then you would immediately see in your next tax bill that comes after the budget adopted, the new assessed value and the new tax rate. And that will not be the case. That will first show up in December, and that will now be the pattern that will always be the case as we go forward, that the December will be the first tax bill and then June will be the second tax bill. The treasurer will have a letter that will accompany those tax bills, just so everybody is aware of that change, and I think that will be good news for taxpayers. Lastly, I just wanted to give the council an update. As part of our ongoing work to try to mitigate sewer backflows, we had a town hall meeting several months ago with our most commonly affected neighborhoods in the southeast part of the city and in the, sort of the Dorchester-Lincoln Avenue area. And as part of our efforts to mitigate those, we're doing public improvements in the public right-of-way on our, on our main sewer lines, but we're also trying to enlist the support and engagement of property owners about the treatment of their own private laterals going to their houses. And we sent a letter out to homeowners in those affected areas, offering a free plumbing inspection for sewer laterals. We had a very positive response to that. We had 68 people who would like to take advantage of that option. What that will do is give homeowners information. If they have a cracked lateral or a broken lateral that's allowing stormwater to get into the sewer system, if they are aware of that, we expect that over time, then they will take actions to fix that. And that's the purpose of the program, is to get that information out so homeowners can make well-informed decisions about their own property maintenance. So I wanted council to be aware of that positive response. I think 15 of those inspections have so far been done, and we'll continue that work, and we'll continue to keep the council informed. That's all I have to report tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Connolly?
Mr. Shields, you said 68 people took advantage of this. How many people was it offered to?
I don't recall that number. It was only to targeted areas where we know we have typically had the complaints in the past, and sort of in those watersheds is where we were trying to target the activity.
I was just wondering what percent of people are taking advantage of the --
Let me get that information back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking of good news, I'd like to report to council that, well, actually, it was my dog that reported to me that the famous orange barrel at the corner of Pennsylvania Park is no longer there and has been replaced by a brand-new street light, and I'm assuming this is not the only street light that's sprouted up over Mother's Day weekend. Can you tell us more about the street lights, how many you replaced them, what they're like?
We did. We had a, I believe it was eight, street lights that had been damaged over the last two years, and so in one contract, we went out to fix them all at one go, and that was done in the last two weeks. And so the Pennsylvania and Park light, which is -- And so the Pennsylvania and Park light, which has long been on several people's list to see it be reinstalled, was done in the last week.
Are these the kind of street lights that are environmentally sustainable or are they just the old-fashioned kind of light?
I, let me get back with you, we are moving, all of our traffic signals are moving to LED lights and our future street lights are going to be LED as well. For these repairs, I need to check and see if they're LED or not and get back with you on that. I know it is a general rule, we're moving all of our street lights over to LED, for instance with the downtown reinvestment program that was part of the budget, those will all be LED, but let me get back with you on these specific lights.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, just one follow-up on the environmental goals report, Mr. Manager. I have not had a chance to read it all the way through. Walkability, I know, we all know is a measure of a community's environmental footprint and just would encourage us to, in our conversations with VEPUS and other groups, consider what our walkability index score is right now, I think there's some things out there on the internet that tell us that, and maybe set a goal to improve our score as the years go on. It's not only the nature of the buildings that we build, whether they're LEED certified, but it's the very buildings themselves which house people who are able to walk to more of the things that make up their daily life, whether it's a grocery or dry cleaner, coffee shop, rather than getting into their internal combustion engine. So if that's not kind of captured in the document, I think that might be a nice thing for us to aim for as a standard along with our recycling standard to see if we can make ourselves the most walkable suburban community in America would be a nice distinction.
Thank you. Along those lines, actually, if I could follow up, we had, I think when we had a presentation about the CACT, there was a designation, something like a walkable city, is that what it's called?
That's right.
Did we ever find out what the standards are or how we might apply for that designation or what it might entail to do that?
There definitely were a whole set of things that you needed to do to qualify for that and I'll need to redistribute that information, I can't recite it off of memory, but it's a high hurdle.
Is it something you think, did you, are you conversant with that, the set of standards?
I'd need to read it again, I think when this first came up, we read through it, but I can't recall all the things that are in it.
Maybe if you could just put a note to yourself in the next couple of weeks to come back to council, maybe at a work session, and just describe to us what those standards are, whether you think they're attainable and if so, at what cost, and whether, then we can decide whether that's a worthy endeavor to seek, but on its face, it sounds like something worth further discussion. Also, there are a couple of other items, I wonder if you could just update us on, the tennis courts look like they're finally about ready to be done behind the rec center. Could you let the community know when you anticipate those being open for public use?
The, one of the things that with a tennis court, the asphalt effort's put down, it needs to cure for a period of time and so there'll be a period of time where it looks like nothing is happening. We'll get the grass seed in, we'll do the landscaping around it, but the tennis court itself, that asphalt is maturing or setting or doing whatever it needs to do. And so it will be mid-summer when we come in with the final surface coats and that court goes back into surface. Similarly, over at, down at the Thackeray preschool, we'll have to go through that same curing process for the asphalt that goes in in there.
And with respect to Thackeray, I know we've got a grand opening tomorrow, can you give council and the public an update of where things are, what, when final completion is anticipated to occur, et cetera?
Well, the, the school is largely complete, they have still a number of, you know, fairly small punch list items that they're working through and that's normal for any complicated project like this. And in fact, the contractor has a year after substantial completion to finish all those punch list items, but so the schools are making good progress on those. On the tennis court side, the drains have been installed and so we now need to go in with the milling and the asphalt work and that will be scheduled very soon. And then after that cures, we'll come in with the final coat. So we believe that the tennis court at Thackeray will be, get that final coat on in the July timeframe and be open for service most likely in the August timeframe.
And tomorrow, there's a grand opening with tours at 6:00 and maybe ribbon cutting at 6:30, is that right?
That's right. I think the timing is a little different from what you just stated, if you're aware...
There are tours at 6:00 and the ribbon cutting is at 6:30. And then there'll be tours after...
6:30, okay, I beg your pardon?
There'll also be tours afterward too if you can't get there right at 6:00. There'll be many Thackeray family members there.
Sounds great. Lastly, at least for me, the bike plan, is that this Wednesday, there's going to be an open house? Or did I get my dates confused?
Yeah, let me get a note to you to confirm.
Well, I just wanted the public to know, I'm sure I'll be able to find out, but I'd like...
It's Wednesday in the Dogwood Room, but the exact time is either 7:00 or 7:30?
I think it starts at 6:00, right? There's a 6:00 to 7:00 schedule of, you know, walking around and presentations and then some more walking around, I think, that's what the Facebook posting said today. Just give us a minute here, we'll get that.
All right, before we go too far along, why don't we just let the general public know when this meeting's going to be, but it is Wednesday and the time, we'll get just a few minutes in the Dogwood Room in this building. And Mr. Shields, you've reached out to the neighbors, discussed at the last meeting, some of the neighborhoods that had concerns with some of the prior plans, they're all aware of this open house, is that right?
Just to confirm, it is at 6:00 PM in the Dogwood and we have gone through all of our, our normal publicity measures, but I will say that, you know, from the PED plan before, we did have an email list of people who really weighed in on that in particular and so I will confirm that we've gotten communication out to them so that they're aware of it as well.
Great, thank you. Are there any other council requests? If not, why don't we move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
Yes, we have TR 1510, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement and accept grant funds up to $115,000 from the Virginia DEQ Stormwater Local Assistance Fund for FY 2015.
Mr. Shields?
And the title is pretty self-explanatory, we've gone out and gotten grants awarded to the city to help us particularly with water quality improvements. It's part of a general effort to leverage our local funds with state and federal funds, which we've done in very big projects, for instance, the Coe and Pearson Branch Stream Restoration Projects are all cost share agreements with the federal government. But we have the local match of $115,000 is in our budget and so we would ask for the council's authorization to execute these grant agreements and proceed with the work.
Are there any comments or questions from anyone? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, is there a motion with respect to this matter? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR 15-10.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries 6 to 0.
Thank you. The next item here is consent items, are there any consent items, Madam Clerk? No?
No, sir.
Okay, so lastly, at least for this portion of the hearing, we've got some minutes from hearing some going back a pretty good while, longer ago than I can remember frankly.
Longer than I've worked here.
Okay, fair enough, fair point. So why don't we just take these one at a time in case someone has corrections to one or the other? The first minutes are from June 23, 2014. I was not present at that meeting, so I'm going to abstain from voting on that, but are there any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I sent Ms. Heath one little spelling correction on a family name.
I did fix that.
Is there anyone else who's got any changes to those minutes?
Is this the one that I sent you, my corrections?
Yes, sir, and those were made.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Duncan? No, okay. So why don't we go ahead and just vote on these, we'll take them one at a time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 23, 2014?
I move to approve June 23, 2014 minutes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, abstentions, I abstain. Okay, so two abstentions and any no votes, none, so I think that's four yes votes and two abstentions. Okay, why don't we go on to the next minutes, the minutes of January 26, 2015? Does anyone have any corrections to those? No? Okay, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of January 26, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. The next minutes are February 23, 2015. Do we have any comments, corrections, revisions? None? Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve minutes of February 23, 2015.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, no votes, none, the ayes have it. Minutes of March 9, 2015, any corrections?
We fixed a typo.
One typo.
One typo, that's fixed. Anyone else have any corrections? Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, move to approve the minutes of March 9, 2015.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Good, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
One abstention.
Okay, so one abstention, Vice Mayor Snyder has an abstention, the rest are yes votes.
Thank you, council.
Okay, so before we go into closed session, we'll be going into closed session in just a moment or two, that means members of the general public will have to leave, yes, that means you, and others as well who are not here officially in their capacity. Before I do, I'd like to make a statement. I make the following statement after consultation with the city attorney, out of an abundance of caution pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112B, I am abstaining from participation in the city council's consideration of recent unsolicited PPEA proposal. I represent a business that I believe is an affiliated business entity, is defined by the Virginia Code of the business that submitted the proposal, Edgemore Infrastructure and Real Estate located at 7500 Old Georgetown Road, 7th floor, Bethesda, Maryland 20814. I have not participated in the closed sessions in this matter, will not take part in the city council's action on Edgemore's unsolicited proposal. Okay, unless there's anything else, why don't we go downstairs or you all go downstairs?
Sir, you are going to Dogwood and so people can stay, I guess, if you're coming back in the session.
Oh, I guess you can technically stay.
Yeah, they can definitely stay.
And we'll go ahead and do the motion as well.
Mr. Mayor, and I would like the public to know that there may be actions that will be on the public record after the closed session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, why don't you go ahead and do the closed session?
Upon a motion made by council member Z, seconded by council member...
Connolly.
Connolly. And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and the receipt of legal advice regarding the recent unsolicited PPEA proposal. Councilmember Baruch not here, councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder, yeah, councilmember Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter is not participating, abstaining. Okay, we are now in closed session.
Thank you all for coming out this evening.
The city council is now back in open session upon a motion made by councilmember...
Connolly.
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 And seconded by councilmember...
Z.
Z. And passed by vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder, yeah, councilmember Z?
Yes.
Time is...
9:50.
Yeah, 10, 9, 50, okay. This is the certification, upon a motion made by councilmember...
Connolly.
And seconded by councilmember...
Oliver.
Oliver. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session and was certified that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Snyder, yeah, councilmember Z?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we're now in open session, fully certified. I'll entertain some motions now.
Mr. Vice Mayor, wish to make motion one of three motions. Motion one being given the difficulty of revising unsolicited proposals to meet both lost church, city, public school needs for a high school as well as a middle school expansion under the existing Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act guidelines and associated processes. I move that the city council reject the unsolicited PPEA proposal delivered to it by Edgemore Infrastructure and Realty on March 11, 2015.
Thank you, is a motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the part of council? Open it up to the public, any question or comment from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, wish to make motion number two. I move that the city council adopt a process reflected in the draft timeline dated May 11, 2015, to pursue the issuance of a request for proposal under the Virginia Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act for conceptual proposals for construction of a new high school, expansion of an existing middle school, commercialization and development of up to 10 acres, and financing for the schools following the completion of a visioning and community engagement process.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the part of council? Open it to the public, any member of the public wish to address us on this issue, being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, wish to make one for the last motion?
Councilmember Z, would councilmember Connolly like to make this motion? No.
It's fine.
Councilmember Z? You got it.
Okay, great. In order to begin this process, I move to authorize the use of George Mason, Mary Ellen Henderson Campus Planning Funds to be utilized by FCCPS for an amount up to $70,000 for visioning, up to $75,000 for the services to hire an owner's representative for FCCPS who specializes in school program planning, RFP development, and construction, and up to $20,000 in planning funds for attorney fees for work related to accomplish such tasks.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on the part of council? Open this item to the public and any member of the public wish to address us? There being none, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And the motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you very much, council. Does anyone have any other matters they want to bring before the council tonight? If there being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thank you. Would somebody move us back, would somebody move to reconvene and certify the closed meeting, please?
I'll move to reconvene in open session.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All in favors? All right, okay. Now we will certify the closed meeting.
Chairman.
Hello, if you, please. Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Kimball. Would you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We are now out of closed and in open session. Would entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman. I move that, given the difficulty of revising unsolicited proposals to meet both FCCPS needs for a high school as well as a middle school expansion under the existing PPEA guidelines and associated processes, I move that the school board reject the unsolicited PPEA proposal delivered to it by Edgemore Infrastructure and Realty on March 11, 2015.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Sharp. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?